...this meeting to order. We're convening in a quorum and if I can find my notes here, who knows? Anyway, here we go. Called to order the meeting in the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, October 24th, 2017, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Maricel Kiana, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Is Fred here?
He's coming.
Okay. Fred is not here yet, but he is on his way. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, that notice of the meeting was posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be given by Mr. Jack Bailey and the pledges by Ms. Nelda Sullivan. If you'd stand, please.
Lord, we pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us, or we thank you for your blessings and your protection, your grace and your love. And we pray now for the Rob Hassan family. We pray that you be with those, comfort and guide and direct them, or be with them through the next few days, that they might feel your comforting hand. And we pray for that school, for the teachers, for the staff, for the students. Lord, we just pray that you give them a steady hand, Lord, and give them confidence and will to go on. Lord, we thank you now for this time that we have to come and consider the business of the district. We pray that you give us clarity and vision. We pray for our entire school district. And we pray for safety and good learning environment, all that we ask in Christ's name.
Amen. Would you please join me in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The policy committee will meet in the boardroom and then we'll convene. We are in open session, so let's go ahead and go over policies. Fred's not here. Who else is on policy committee? Okay, will you handle this, please, sir?
Policy's super short this time. It's only one. Derek has a deadline of October 31st to submit, to get an award from, I think it's Tasbo, for purchasing directors. And last year, he was dinged and didn't receive the, one of the reasons, or the predominant reason that he didn't receive the reward was because our policy didn't specifically mention purchasing cards as an authorized method of procurement. So that's all the change does. I think it's on page two or three of the policy. In your book, the change is on page 146, so it's page two of the policy. And you'll see, you know, the new text and then the marked out text under it. But it's just listing the approved methods of, you know, whether it's a PO or the purchase card, or some sort of other electronic transaction that we utilize.
Okay, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question. If I did have a question about that, which I don't, could I say something even though I'm not on the committee?
What do you mean, could you say something?
Well, we got ready to go. Let's start it.
Okay. I'll call for discussion at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me give you a question.
No, you really can't.
Okay. The board is going, the board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee, 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty of the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. And we'll reconvene in open session, seven o'clock, or as quick as we can. We're going to reconvene in open session. First order of business is, yeah, hold on just a minute, special recognition.
Well, board members, I want to start by introducing someone special to Pasadena ISD, which is Dr. Pam Wells. She's the Executive Director of Region Four and a graduate, correct?
Absolutely.
Sam Rayburn. All right, we've got some Sam Rayburn folks in the audience. But what I want to say about Dr. Wells before we kick off our Teacher of the Year recognition is that she has been an advocate for this district and a friend to me personally as my time as superintendent. She was amazing through Hurricane Harvey, giving us up-to-date information about the storm and just coordinating resources. I couldn't ask for a better person to help in that situation. So thank you, thank you, thank you. She put us in contact with a lot of donors, a lot of special donors, and they've helped our district immensely. So I just wanted to recognize her while we have the opportunity tonight. But if she'll come forward, she has some other special guests.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. It is a great honor to be here. If you don't mind, just, I'm going to add that in addition to being a graduate of Sam Rayburn High School, my family lived here for many years. I actually, I don't think I've ever shared this with you, Dr. Powell. My family moved here when I was in the sixth grade. I went to San Jacinto and then Parkview Intermediate. I don't know if it's still an intermediate, but Parkview Intermediate opened and we were the first class. And this is something funny that I haven't told you. I was actually one of the first cheerleaders at Parkview.
No cowboys.
Yeah, and we were asked to write the school song. So I don't know if the school song is still the same one that it was 100 years ago when we wrote it. But, so I have deep roots in Pasadena and so were, I was so, so excited to have the opportunity to come and to join you, to make this night very special for a very special teacher. So President Morgan and board members and Dr. Powell, thank you for allowing me to join you today. I have literally come home to Pasadena ISD, but the reason that I'm here is to celebrate excellence in teaching. Every fall, the Texas Association of School Administrators facilitates the Texas Teacher of the Year Program. This year, the Region Four Teacher of the Year. And of course, we are the largest region in the state of Texas. We serve school districts that educate 1.2 million children in our greater Houston area. And so there were 93 teachers from 46 school districts and three charter schools throughout the Region Four area who were honored at the Texas, at the Region Four Teacher of the Year. And two of these, one elementary school teacher and one secondary school teacher were, who were selected as Region Four Teachers of the Year. So it is my great pleasure and to have this opportunity to help you celebrate the Region Four Secondary Teacher of the Year, Brenda Varvutis. I'm honored to make this presentation to this distinguished and extraordinary educator. So Brenda, would you come up while I talk about? So I want to share a little bit more about this great honor that she has. She, of course, as you all know, I don't have to tell you, she's the choir director at South Houston High School. She has 31 years of teaching experience and she has demonstrated the utmost commitment and passion for her work. And she and I were talking before this about the fact that that passion extends beyond just to teach and choir, but also to certainly caring for her children as people and as individuals. And of course, she has the belief that teachers should always have the highest expectations for their students. During her recent tenure as choir director, the students have been nominated for the prestigious Tommy Tune Awards. Those of us who've been in music know that's a big deal. She holds a certificate de stade, is it stage or stage? Stage? I'm not, don't speak French, from International Academy in Nice, France, and a Bachelor of Music from the University of Houston. I want to share with you, though, some kind of interesting information to let you know and certainly to let the audience know how significant it is to be the Teacher of the Year for Region Four. There are 75,000 teachers in Region Four, and she is the one secondary Teacher of the Year. I think we need to give her another award. So in appreciation of the dedication of Ms. Varvutis and her commitment to education in her students, you don't know about this, but we have some special, special guests here tonight. The Han Company and Office Depot have generously commemorated your being named as Region Four Secondary Teacher of the Year. So at this time, I'd like to ask the Office Depot representative, Tim Nguyen, who is a vertical market manager, he's going to give you a special, why don't you tell what it is?
You have, from Office Depot, congratulations, Adele Laptop Computer.
Woo-hoo!
And the good news, Brenda, you don't have to put that on your inventory. That's all yours.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Let's put a sticker on it.
Says your name on it. So I'd also like to ask Eden Badalato, who is the Business Development Associate from the Han Company, to come up, and he's going to make another presentation to you. This is your special chair, and Han, each year does, they actually design a special chair for the Teacher of the Year, and I don't think this is going to go on the inventory either.
got her here, so congratulations again.
I think this is for you. So we certainly, Region Four could not put on such a nice Teacher of the Year event And thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When did you graduate from Rayburn?
and certainly couldn't do this without the support of our great business partners. Oh, you had to ask that question. I used to like you.
Fred wanted me to ask that.
And so we so appreciate Han and Office Depot for recognizing you. I'm 1971.
Well, good for you.
Yes. They tell me all the time that this is the most fun thing they do, is to be able to not
Thank you.
In fact, I just had my 65th birthday last week.
Go Texas.
only attend the Teacher of the Year event, but to have the opportunity to honor you. So many people were not even alive.
Linda's waving at you.
So congratulations again. This is so well deserved. But I have to tell you, and I mean this very sincerely, my sisters and I had the So you have a friend that's going to take a picture. very best education, and it helped us so much to be successful, not only in college, but in life. And Pasadena has continued to have that, that culture of excellence, and I've seen Do you mind getting in front so we can get a really cool picture in front of your board? it as an educator, I was a longtime educator in Safer ISD, and I've seen that here in Pasadena Look at, she's moving now. Can you generally come out? throughout my career. So congratulations and thank you for the support that you give the district. Do you want to? I think that's why they have continued to have that culture of excellence.
Y'all want to come right here in the middle?
Come in the middle?
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right up here. Well, next, we still have some exciting presentations today.
She needs to be right underneath.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Congratulations.
We have Amber McNish here, who's our instructional specialist for coordinated health, or school health, sorry about that, Amber. If you'll come forward, I think you have a special presentation.
I do, and I apologize for my voice. This kind of came out of nowhere. So this award, the first award that we're going to go over tonight is from Tafford. So this is the letter that they asked for me to read. "On behalf of the Associate Executive Director of the Texas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance, Rose Haggerty, it is my honor to recognize the 2017 K-12 Administrator of the Year, Pam Tevis. This award honors individuals who have dedicated, this award honors individuals who have dedicated themselves to excellence as administrators or supervisors in contributions to the profession and in service to the mission of Tafford. Such individuals exemplify the higher standards of accomplishment and innovation and in strong, vigorous leadership nominated and elected by her peers statewide. Congratulations, Pam."
Well, Amber can't run off because she's got more good news, so I'll let her take it over again.
All right, so this is another, so Tafford also does the exemplary schools program, so we're recognizing school campuses for excellence in health and physical education. In 2015, it marked the first school year a school in Texas reached Level One Exemplary Schools Award. This was to Red Bluff Elementary. Then this year, only one Texas school will receive an exemplary school award. Congratulations to Turner Elementary. They're a Level Three. Where are they? Congrats. And I want to make sure and go ahead and recognize the principals from Turner and Red Bluff Elementary. They're right over here. They can wave to us. We could not have the PE programs and the health programs that we do on their campuses without their support. So thank you, ladies.
Great job.
Congratulations again. Want to get a picture, Jade? Maybe with their principals as well, or do you? Oh, no. Look, I'm no, okay. Just our rock star PE folks. So now I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Amanda, is it Crippell?
Cripple.
Cripple, okay, from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation.
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. So I am the Program Manager for the Houston area for the Alliance for Healthier Generation, and I'm here to congratulate some two outstanding schools. So the Alliance for Healthier Generation recognized 323 schools this year as America's healthiest schools. The Alliance for Healthier Generation is an organization that empowers kids to develop lifelong healthy habits. For the fourth year in a row, the most recognized schools came from right here, Texas. 64 schools, including first-year Pasadena schools. Red Bluff and Turner Elementary are the first two award-winning from the school district. Schools earned the distinction by successfully meeting rigorous set of criteria for serving healthier meals, snacks, getting students moving more, and offering high-quality physical and health education. Congrats to Red Bluff and Turner Elementary.
Switched it up a little bit.
This is what we call double booty. Congratulations.
Thank you. We would also like to recognize the Child Nutrition Director, Mary Harriman, who played a big part in recognizing these two schools, as well as the principals of Red Bluff and Turner Elementary. So thank you very much, ladies. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have another recognition. Is it Sean Vaughn? Is that correct? Am I doing okay? Okay. She's the School Wellness Consultant for Dairy Max, so she has a presentation that she will make.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Houston Texans and Dairy Max, Chair of Local Dairy Council, we would like to award 20 Pasadena ISD schools with a $500 gift card to help replace any PE equipment that they may have lost during Hurricane Harvey. We hope that this $10,000 award will help these schools get back to some type of normalcy. So congratulations to those 20 Pasadena ISD.
Thank you so much.
our, the images with Hurricane Harvey, so that's awesome. I'd like to introduce now Laura Smith and Madeline Pena. Laura Smith is the Youth Market Director for Pasadena ISD, and Madeline Pena is the Director of Youth Market Communications. And they're here to make a special presentation to the board. And while they are here, we would like to thank the American Heart Association for reaching out to Pasadena ISD to provide equipment to schools who had losses also during the flood, so thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the American Heart Association, we would like to thank and recognize Pasadena ISD for continuing to support us in building the lives, healthier lives of children through their support of cardiovascular disease and stroke. We work with nearly all of the elementary schools in Pasadena ISD through the Jump Rope for Heart Program. I know I did it when I was growing up, and it's been around, I think, for now 40 years, and we continue to keep it alive here in Pasadena ISD. We would also like to recognize Pam Tevis for supporting the American Heart Association and our initiatives for so many years, and we also have an award for Pam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Well, this was fun, but I believe that's all of our special recognition tonight. We just want to say thank you to everyone that came tonight to, of course, be part of this special evening.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we're going to move on with the agenda. We have no public comment, so let's move to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? So move. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is Personnel Section. Ms. Kiana?
I move that we approve Administrative Personnel Addenda A.
Motion by Ms. Kiana, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of the Addition, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Do we have Melody Schmitz? Congratulations. Welcome to Pasadena. You are now the Assistant Director of Technical Services. Do you have any family with you here this evening? Well, welcome, welcome to the family.
Okay, let's move on then. Consideration and Possible Approval of the Addition of Three Support Personnel to Transportation Department. So move. Motion by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Roberts. I know your name. Any discussion?
Board members, I just want to say that I know this is a unique time to be making changes personnel-wise, but because of all the homeless students that we're now serving and that number continues to grow, we've seen a real need for additional routing assistance, just the phone in the afternoon and in the mornings at transportation. You can't imagine the load that they're experiencing right now because of all the various routes they're running inside and outside the district because of the McKinney-Vento children that we serve. And then also, they need the additional clerical help, so that was the reason, and dispatch as well. So there is a savings in this change, but I just wanted to let you know the reason for it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of Application for TEA Miss School Day Waiver for LF Smith Elementary. So move. Motion by Ms. Kiana, right, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of Year Two of the HISD School Health and Related Services, Char's Agreement for the 2017-18 School Year. So move. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next, this is for Information Only, and we have a presentation for 2016-17 Grants Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thank you for allowing me a little bit of time to share with you about the work of the Grants Department from last year. But before I get started, I want to recognize my amazing team. First, I have Erin Como, our Grants Coordinator, Yvette Hernandez, our Grants Secretary, and Rakeeta Stewart, our Grants Compliance Coordinator. Thank you, ladies. For last year, we continued to be the central source for seeking and applying for external funding for the district, as well as providing compliance support for grants that were awarded. So looking at 2016-17, what we did is we looked at all of the award letters that we received between August 1st, 2016, and July 31st, 2017. And so the total of those awards was over $6 million. What's really exciting about those awards is that they included new and continuation awards. So not only can we write and get new grants, but also through our compliance arm, and Rakeeta providing great support to our grant managers, then they can implement the programs as written and keep the funders happy. And when you keep the funders happy, they keep funding you. So we're happy with that. Now, if you look and see, there are several different categories there, and we have the majority of our funding in our literacy and our after-school programs, but we do have a few other areas where we're divvying up our funding. So we're really excited about some of the things that have happened this past year. We were able to really solidify our relationship with the Education Foundation, and Cindy is wonderful to work with. And so since July, we've already submitted six applications, and so we look forward to submitting some more. So we're excited about the possibilities that can bring. Also, we received over six requests to partner on grants with San Jacinto College and the University of Houston Clear Lake. And the reason why I mention this is because that's a testament to what's going on in this district. Other people know about the great instruction. Other people find it easy to work with, so they're coming to us saying, hey, we want you to be a part of our application. So kudos to all the instructional staff and everybody, because everybody knows. And so all I do is make the letters pretty, but I'm getting all of these requests saying, hey, we want y'all to be a part of this grant, and it's nothing that we're doing, it's what everybody else is doing across the district, so kudos. Also, we continue with our grant workshops this year, and we had an overwhelming All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of Year Two of the HISD School Health and Related Services Char's Agreement for the 2017-18 School Year. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next, this is for Information Only and we have a presentation for 2016-17 Grants Department.
Well, thank you for allowing me a little bit of time to share with you about the work of the Grants Department from last year. But before I get started, I want to recognize my amazing team. First, I have Erin Como, our Grants Coordinator, Yvette Hernandez, our Grants Secretary, and Rakeeta Stewart, our Grants Compliance Coordinator. Thank you ladies. For last year, we continued to be the central source for seeking and applying for external funding for the district as well as providing compliance support for grants that were awarded. So looking at 2016-17, what we did is we looked at all of the award letters that we received between August 1st, 2016, and July 31st, 2017. And so the total of those awards was over $6 million. What's really exciting about those awards is that they included new and continuation awards. So not only can we write and get new grants, but also through our compliance arm and Rakeeta providing great support to our grant managers, then they can implement the programs as written and keep the funders happy. When you keep the funders happy, they keep funding you. So we're happy with that. Now, if you look and see, there are several different categories there and we have the majority of our funding in our literacy and our after-school programs, but we do have a few other areas where we're divvying up our funding. So we're really excited about some of the things that have happened this past year. We were able to really solidify our relationship with the Education Foundation and Cindy is wonderful to work with. And so since July, we've already submitted six applications and so we look forward to submitting some more. So we're excited about the possibilities that can bring. Also, we received over six requests to partner on grants with San Jacinto College and the University of Houston Clear Lake. And the reason why I mention this is because that's a testament to what's going on in this district. Other people know about the Great Instruction. Other people find us easy to work with, so they're coming to us saying, hey, we want you to be a part of our application. So kudos to all the instructional staff and everybody because everybody knows. And so all I do is make the letters pretty, but I'm getting all of these requests saying, hey, we want y'all to be a part of this grant. And it's nothing that we're doing, it's what everybody else is doing across the district. So, kudos. Also, we continue with our grant workshops this year and we had an overwhelming response. In fact, we had to find bigger rooms because we had so many people interested in learning about grants. And so that lets us know that there is a need and we still need to educate people and help them understand, hey, you can go after grants, we can all work together to go after So looking ahead, of course, we're going to continue to strengthen that collaboration. We're going to continue to submit proposals so that we can really go down that path and explore that different stream of funding. We also want to drive more traffic to our webpage. On our webpage, we have opportunities that range from $500 to about $3,000, but some of the people that attend those workshops, they're able to go on our website and they can put those applications in themselves or they can work with us. So we want to empower the staff as well to work on some of the smaller applications. Because we had such an overwhelming response for this summer, we added a workshop for the fall and for the spring, just to kind of test the waters. Because if they're really interested, we want to give the people what they want, right? And about a week and a half ago, the Secretary of Education released her 11 proposed priorities. And so we're really interested to see how this year is going to pan out because those priorities will drive how they build grant competitions from the federal level and probably how they distribute the money to the state level. So we really want to dig in and make sure that the district is grant-ready. So those priorities range anywhere from STEM with the focus on computer science all the way to family engagement where they're really wanting the community organizations to be a part of that process. So again, this is going to be a really interesting year to see how this new Secretary of Education rolls out these priorities. And as always, we appreciate your support and we thank you for allowing us to do what we do. And are there any questions?
You do a fantastic...
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Just a comment.
Yes.
You got to do a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
There's so many things going on in this district that without the grants and things that you get, we wouldn't have. And I'm just amazed always at what you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see every board book because every board book has more grants in it and you guys work so hard and I appreciate all of you. You know, I appreciate our district, like you say, we have a great reputation. And that reputation makes your job easier and you make us look better. So I thank you for everything that y'all have done for this district.
Thank you. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. Consideration and Possible Approval of Seniors in the Maritime, Culinary, Criminal Justice, Cosmetology, and Child Guidance Programs at the Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School to Experience a Hands-on Cruise Experience Above/Aboard a Carnival Cruise, January 13th through 18th, 2018. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
Can we go?
Yeah, I know.
That's great.
You're Mr. Fleming saying, you can go.
Okay.
You can go.
Put my name in too. Any other discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
We look forward to seeing pictures like we have in the past and getting to experience through photographs.
We've added more kids, right, Mr. Fleming? We've added the child guidance?
Yeah.
Cosmetology, criminal justice, child guidance.
So they'll be working with the security folks on the boat and, of course, childcare.
Child guidance will be doing the day activities, monitoring the kids, cosmetology will be doing the spa.
Spa.
As well as the entertainment, the costumes.
Oh, that's awesome.
Fantastic.
Will criminal justice be able to do like the immigration side of it?
Criminal justice is going to do boarding, onboarding, in-forth security, night watch.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Top secret.
Well, Maritime could also get a little piece of that too.
We didn't do it.
All right.
I hope we voted on this one? We did, didn't we?
No, it's okay. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of the J. Frank Dobie High School Debate Team Members to Travel Out of State to the George Mason University Patriot Games Classic in Fairfax, Virginia on December 2nd through 3rd, 2017. The 2018 Barclay Forum in Atlanta, Georgia at Emory University on January 26th through January 30th, and to the National Harvard Forensics League Competition in Cambridge, Massachusetts on February 9th through February 11th. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of Jackson Intermediate Students to Travel to Washington DC and New York City, New York, June 25th through 28th, 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
Question.
Go ahead.
I had a question about the cost of the trip. Isn't this a little bit high?
The students will pay in installments, their parents, and we're also planning on doing a lot of fundraising for it to kind of further costs.
And it's probably because they're going to both Washington DC and New York. Usually you'll just see one or the other, but it looks like they're fortunate enough to make both cities, correct?
They're going to, you know, on bus, they'll go from one to the other.
How many students do you expect?
We haven't put it out there yet. They've done this in the past, but it was several years ago. And we haven't had a teacher.
Who's going to... Everybody says that. Ah, okay.
I'm just so used to being loud in the classroom. They've done it several years ago, but we haven't had anyone, any teacher who wanted to... I mean, you know, it's a lot of work. So another teacher and I decided that we're going to give it a shot and see if we can get some kids to go and have, you know, experience something different.
Are they interested in it?
Yes, they are, especially like the New York part to Ellis Island and the different places that they can go in Washington also. Most of the students have never been there.
Well, I just got back from Washington and I'm telling you, I had been 20 years ago and things have changed so much that they're going to get an up-to-date view of everything that's going on. And it is a wonderful trip for young people.
Well, yes, I have, I've never been there, so I'd be glad to go to Washington also.
Good.
And I loved New York.
And are the kids excited about the possibility of this trip?
Yeah, we kind of, we haven't really made an announcement because we had to get approval first, you know? But just like putting it out there, asking who would be interested in it, a lot of them would and they're up for the fundraising. And I've done fundraising in the past for my sons when they were in school. So, you know, we have a good idea of what we're going to do for the fundraising to, you know, to bring the cost down, so it'll be less... We're hoping to, that the parents only have to pay like maybe 500 to 1,000, not more than 1,000. So we're looking at some major, you know, interested in candy.
I'd be glad to get you the name of our tour driver. He did a wonderful job of explaining everything in DC.
The company that we're using, we use, she used it before and they have somebody with them all the time, even at nighttime. They said that somebody's there in the, at the hotel and they're there in the hallway and they keep guard that nobody's going to leave. The kids can't leave or go anyplace or come out of their room. So it sounds, you know, pretty good that... And the companies, they've been doing it for a long time also. The World Travel.
This is a great opportunity for these kids.
Mr. Roberts, she had a question.
What is the, what do you expect the average age of these young people to be on the trip?
Probably 13, 14 years old. Maybe 15.
Eighth graders.
It's seventh and eighth grade, yes.
Seventh and eighth grade?
Yes.
Have, I know we send kids to Denver and we send them to Colorado to a camp, but have we sent intermediate kids to...
All the intermediates.
New York and...
Our, Jackson has gone before.
Not as much New York as DC, but most of the schools do take a trip to DC.
I went back in the day.
In junior high?
Yes. And it was a trip I'll never forget. Still today.
Yeah, just, of course, the world is such a different place now. I have concerns, but I'm sure of it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. If you'd make notes that Mr. Roberts voted no. Okay, next is Consideration and Possible Approval of Pasadena Memorial High School Band to Travel to and Perform at Walt Disney World's Magic Music Days in Orlando, Florida, April 28th through May 2nd, 2018. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is Consideration and Possible Approval of South Houston High School Band to Travel and Perform in Orlando, Florida on April 27th through May 2nd, 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Kiana, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Sam Rayburn Texan Band to Travel to Florida April 27th through April 30th to Perform in the Disney Magic Music Days Festival at Walt Disney World Resort. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Before they run off, can the band director stand, all of them?
Absolutely.
These guys have worked their tails off, all of them.
Congratulations for this last week.
Absolutely. Every single one of you rocked it, so thank you. I got calls from parents from other districts saying they were so impressed with every single one of your bands. They were awesome. So, good job.
Lot of hard work.
And now you get to go to Disney World. Just what you wanted.
Just take those doors.
Okay, next is Policy Update and Review. This is update 2017-04.04.
We adopt... Are you going to, Freddie?
No, you go ahead and do it. No, you better do it.
Chairman.
No, I know, but I'm moving it over to you.
You're delegating?
I'm delegating it.
President, we adopt the local update 2017.04 affecting CH Local.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to the Financial Section. Consideration and Possible Approval of Budget Amendments.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kiana. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Courier Armored Car Services CSP #18P-002LP. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
I have an opportunity to speak with John today about this and this is such a positive new endeavor within our school district. I'm so glad to see us do this and it will create a lot of safety factors.
Protection.
For our individuals.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of the 2017 Appraisal Roll.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Resale of Foreclosed Properties for Delinquent Taxes, 720 Center Street, 069-110-000-0022.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Resale of Foreclosed Properties for Delinquent Taxes, 1007 West Hart Avenue, #074-175-003-0002.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Resale of Foreclosed Properties for Delinquent Taxes, 1113 Randall Street, #065-093-001-0003.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Resale of Foreclosed Properties for Delinquent Taxes,
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts.
Question. Is this, now, they'll take this to the courthouse and sell it at the courthouse? And if it doesn't sell at the courthouse, what happens?
They're already struck off properties. These are.
Okay.
So, we actually have a sell now? Anita, we already have a buyer.
Hi, I haven't received any interest.
Anita, if you come to the microphone, please.
By the way, she told me a while ago it's the top of the third, no score.
Nice.
One to zero?
Astros?
What happened to your signals?
How am I going to give you signals when I stand up here?
Oh, one to zero. Who's favorite? Not all? Dog. That's not true.
Okay, so these pieces of property have already been struck off to Pasadena ISD. So they'll go to a tax sale. If no one's there to bid on them, nothing happens, we just...
Bring them back?
Bring them back. I don't have any letters of interest or phone calls on these four, so I'm not sure if anyone will show up to purchase them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Work on those hand signals.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to the Operations Section. Consideration and Possible Approval of Blanket Electrical Easements for the New LF Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, #28 for the new LF Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Dr. Powell, how's the water situation coming along?
At LF Smith?
Oh, the...
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. And Kevin, you may want to come up. We've finished up the sheet rock, correct?
Yes.
And we're working on getting the final base, what do we call that? Cover base?
Four inch cover base, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And painting. We're hoping to finish up the painting this weekend. And then we're keeping an eye on the flooring as well.
And everyone's been forthcoming about making things right?
Yes. Tramala is making it all right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, Number 31 for the new LF Smith School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by, who was that?
Mr. Roberts.
Mr., I thought it was Mr. Fernandez. Okay. Okay, Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next, it's consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, Number 43 for the new LF Smith Elementary School Project.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, Number 44 for the new LF Smith School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of 2014 bond contingency pool funding of the Construction Technology Budget and Fixtures Furniture and Equipment, FFNE, for the Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical School Edition Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Anyone have any questions or comments about the construction update?
I got one.
Okay.
Going to the Dobie Ninth Grade Campus. It says it's 99% complete, is it 99% complete? That's a pretty big number.
Well, we've got?
Is the ceiling and everything in?
We had great inspections by the city last Thursday. They approved, so we were able to close up the ceilings. They're hoping to get temporary certificate of occupancy this Friday.
This coming Friday?
Yeah. And then admin area would move in on November 1st.
So?
It's moving.
Yeah, 99, 99% means that, what's left on that 1%?
We have flooring in the cafeteria, we still have the courtyard, which we had delays on the permit, and then we had some rain delays on the courtyard.
Right.
So a little bit of area on the stage, and then some of the athletics are doing the final standing in the gym, on the gym floor.
Have they put the track in there and everything? Is that all in place?
Mm-hmm, yes.
1% is a pretty small number. I thought it was further than that, just driving by and so on and so forth.